Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting, Monday, August 7th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin with a prayer from Pastor Janine Worling.
Gracious God, your word tells us that there is no authority given except from above, and in fact, your Son Jesus said these words. We thank you for the authority and power entrusted to these individuals, and we pray that you might guide them. Be in the midst of their deliberations and discussions and all the work that they do, that their work may first give glory and honor to you alone, and second, be for the good of all people in Watertown, South Dakota. We pray for your grace to be upon them as they conduct the business of this city. We thank you for your good gifts to us. All this with grateful hearts, we pray in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Albertson? Bueller? Bueller? Danforth?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti absent. Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Wy?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to make a note that Beth Manti has taken a leave of absence from the council until November. First item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion from Bueller and a second from Roby. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes. Second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I would like to remove item number six. It's not needed at this time. It met the criteria after the agenda was published. So... That's the only change I would suggest. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vilhauer and a second by Lalum to approve the agenda with removal of item number six. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes. The third item on the agenda is the Community Rating System plaque presentation by Federal Emergency Management Agency Representative, Tom Burney.
Good evening. My name is Tom Burney. I'm with FEMA Region 8. I appreciate the opportunity to come up here. I am the National Flood Insurance Program Specialist for South Dakota, and it's my honor to present the City of Watertown with their CRS plaque. The CRS plaque states, "The community has undertaken a series of meaningful activities to protect its citizens from losses caused by flooding and has significantly exceeded the requirements for the National Flood Insurance participation and effective floodplain management." The CRS is a voluntary community, or excuse me, a voluntary program where the communities elect to join. It is a very long process, one that has taken a little bit of time, but on May 1st, the community became, City of Watertown, became the sixth community in South Dakota to join the program. By joining the program, not only do they show that they have sound floodplain management responsibilities and practices, it also goes to save their residents money. In the case of City of Watertown, on a year, you're saving approximately $30,000 worth of insurance premiums paid by your residents in the National Flood Insurance Program. So it is a significant savings that the city has done for the residents, and you guys should be commended for that. So it's my honor to share this plaque and present it to the mayor.
In accepting this plaque, I would like to point out that, as Tom said, it takes a long time to achieve this, and it's a lot of work. And I want to recognize Rick Schlechter. He's in the audience. Rick, will you please stand? Rick was the Special Projects Engineer for the City of Watertown in 1997 when the City of Watertown had a devastating flood. And he's probably the only one in this room, correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, that was here at that time. It was long days and nights. Our community was devastated. There were huge damages that went on. And after that flood, Rick did a lot of work to help set Watertown up to protect itself from future flooding. So, for instance, the flood mitigation plan was done while Rick was here, and he had a lot to do with that. And we built berms and isolation structures. And Rick laid a lot of the groundwork for which the city received credit in order to earn the rating through the Community Rating System that resulted in lower flood insurance premiums. So I want to thank Rick. This wouldn't have been possible without your hard work many years ago. And also, there's a couple other people that aren't here that I would like to acknowledge. One of those is a brilliant young engineer named Heath Peterson, who was an intern on the engineering staff last year when we were gathering all the points to submit to FEMA for our rating. And with Heath's help, we got a lot more points than we would have been able to get if Heath hadn't been here. So, thanks Heath. And also Lori Marshider is the Engineering Administrative Assistant, who has helped for many years setting up the files and doing the correspondence and keeping everything together for documentation for community rating. And she helped a lot with that, too. So, also want to thank Lori. So, anyway, thanks for coming, Tom. Tom came from Denver to give us this plaque, and I appreciate that. All right, moving on. Item number four is appointments to fill vacancies on city boards and commissions and council committee assignments. And since the agenda was published, there is one correction. I had a Plan Commission member resign. So Dennis Arnold is no longer on the list. He has stepped down. And Megan Olson, who was listed as an alternate, will be taking Dennis's place as a full member of the Plan Commission and Board of Adjustment. And... Rhonda Dargatz-Johnson will be replacing Megan as an alternate. Otherwise, the appointments that I've recommended are all as shown. So do we have a motion and a second to approve the appointments?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Lalum, is there a second? Second by Albertson. Is there any discussion?
Just one question. You've got a corrected page one. Is page two then the same?
Page two is the same.
Okay.
Mayor, prior to discussion earlier today, I'd like to discuss the Plan Commission Board of Adjustments assignment and the discussion with Todd Kayes on there. As we all know, and everybody hopefully knows this, but Todd Kayes is a employee of First District, which provides a lot of services to our community and City Hall in regards to planning, zoning, comprehensive plans, ordinance review and language, et cetera. Todd is a very, very capable individual. I have no qualms whatsoever with Todd. My concern is with the position that he holds at First District as a contracted individual or organization that is under contract with the city as well as the county. They also serve as the county's... What is it there? Ordinance Review and Planning, Zoning, Board of Adjustments. And it just, there's a sense within me that there just seems to be a conflict with those other duties in my mind. And again, I'd love to have Todd on there, but I believe that the potential and whether it be real or perceived conflict, I just think that that needs to be very seriously considered before we approve that individual.
I guess I would second the concerns that Mike expressed. I've got the highest regard for Todd. I, you know, his skills, ability, his temperament, his demeanor, I would love to see on that board, but I am concerned. I compare it to, I'm an accountant by trade, and our code of ethics very clearly state that there's a perceived conflict of interest. By default, you have a conflict of interest. So if that perception is out there, which I'm concerned would be, I just really think that there is going to be that perception or that thought that we do have a conflict there. I've had conversations where people don't understand what or who First District is, that they think it's actually a part of the city. And again, it just lends itself to confusion. There's times where there's other employees of that office that have provided input and testimony at Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meetings. That again would lend itself to an awkward situation where you've got one of Todd's coworkers.
Act that we do contract with them and that the county contracts with them, I believe continuously with the First District. I see where that could be an issue as well.
I think this conversation does beg the question, conflict versus perceived conflict? And is it a recusal situation? Or is it a situation where you'd have to be recusing him all self-so often that it is indeed a flat conflict? I guess, I don't have an opinion one way or the other until this was brought up tonight. I just would throw that out there. Is it a situation where he would accuse himself on occasion, as I'm about to do on some later items? Or is it one where it's just, there's just too much common ground for conflict?
If you would permit me, Councilman, I think I might be able to provide some insights there. So when you talk about conflict of interest from a legal perspective, there's the personal conflict of interest, there is the financial conflict of interest. The one relates to your connections, your friends, your family, the potential to not decide something in the public interest by virtue of your personal connections. The second obviously relates to your financial considerations. And there, you know, taking Councilman Vilhauer's point to heart, you know, especially when it comes to issues before the Board of Adjustment, perception of a conflict of interest is important. What I will say is, based upon my understanding of where we have contracts with First District and based upon what decisions Todd would be called upon in serving both as Plan Commissioner and Board of Adjustment, there are really two instances where the First District, by their employees, provide direct contracted advice to the city. Or indirect for that matter. The first is in the creation of the Comprehensive Plan, which my understanding is we're in the process of looking at a renewal of that. That is something that, I don't know, Shane, in terms of city staff, we have the city planner, Brandy Hanton, working with Luke on that. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So we have an interlocutor in the form of a city employee working on that particular function. Nevertheless, if that were to come before the Plan Commission because of the fact that it was produced by First District employees, at least, you know, if not in substantial part, in good part, then Todd would need to recuse himself at that point. The other circumstance where Mr. Kayes would likely need to recuse himself is with the joint jurisdiction meetings, where you have Luke as zoning official for Cottington County providing the staff for the county in a place where both the county Plan Commission and the city Plan Commission have to come to agreements and make a joint recommendation to their respective governing boards with regard to the substance that comes before them. In that circumstance, there's the potential for a conflict of interest. Both of those conflicts are what I would term personal conflicts of interest. And that's because it is my understanding that Mr. Kayes, serving on the Plan Commission and Board of Adjustment, would have no role in determining whether the contract with First District is renewed. That is a decision that is vested with the City Council. So you're essentially left with, as far as I can tell, two aspects of the Plan Commission's decision-making process. And you look at the business that goes before the Plan Commission, and it isn't those, I think it's fair to say. I mean, you know, the lion's share of the business is variances, or, excuse me, vacations, zoning, rezoning, you know, things of that nature. Platte approval, or platte recommendations, rather. The items that go before the Board of Adjustment are the variances, conditional uses, and appeals of the building officials' decision. And while there is the potential for one-off conflicts that exist there, it's difficult to see, from a legal perspective, how that changes much more over your traditional person who's interested in the Board of Adjustment by virtue of their past life experience, whether it's in the building trades or what have you. So, in some, you know, I think the policy justifications for it, I mean, I won't speak to those, but from a legal perspective, I don't see there being... Now, I will qualify that. The Comprehensive Plan is a very important decision of the Plan Commission, but it comes up so frequently that, you know, that all needs to be, or infrequently, excuse me, Councilman. Thank you for that clarification. That, you know, I guess I, from a legal perspective, wouldn't have as much of an issue so long as he properly recused himself.
I would like to...
Is Pat Triver staying on?
Pat asked voluntarily to step down. His term was not expired. But he serves on two boards. He's chairman of both. And he's gonna stay on. Yeah, he's been on the Plan Commission for many, many years.
So with that being said, Todd Kayes would offer a lot of expertise to this particular, and these are wonderful people, but the expertise of Pat and even Dennis, I see, is moving down. So Todd would offer, listening to what our council person has said, that he would offer a lot of expertise that probably currently isn't there right now.
I would like to add that, and you probably all know this, but Todd Kayes is the most highly qualified planner that we have in our region. He lives in Watertown. He's a citizen of our community. And he wants to volunteer on this board. What a wonderful gift to Watertown. And what harm can be done when, by having a very highly qualified individual serve on this voluntary board? And I think he has a sense to recuse himself as necessary. And I'm not concerned at all about his ability to serve with a conflict of interest being a problem.
I kind of view this as a, not a formal manner. Justin and I had a little bit of discussion about this over the last few days, but we don't allow city employees to be on these boards and commissions. And I ask, and don't get me wrong, Todd is not a city employee, but he's kind of a quasi-employee in the role that they play at First District. Because we could have those resources here, and we could be doing that without contracting with First District. Different than the examples there that you had today about insurance. Well, we aren't going to go start an insurance company or we're not going to be an insurance salesman. It's different than that. We could fill this position. And so I see that as a quasi-city employee. It's just contracted, per se. And again, I look at it and I, again, I have the highest respect for him. I just, I'm concerned with the conflict that's there and the potential influence that might exist there over all the whole board. And I, we need to have them be their own individuals, their own people. Because if we don't, then let's just do away with the board. And we'll just have, you know, a person do it. But I'm, so I am concerned about that influence. Now, we want experience. We want... Their recommendations certainly to be considered. But with so many people on the board, which is contrary, Dan, again, to what you're saying, is, is there going to be that, that type of an influence over everybody else that's on there with so many new people? We want them. I believe that's probably why we have a public or community board. It's for them to give them the resources and let them do their job. And so, that's where my position is. I have that concern and...
The learning curve is really high on the two boards. And somebody like Todd will come in, and he sits in on a lot of these meetings. His curve would be a lot lower than, I mean, there are several new people on there. And, you know, I'm still thinking it might be worth having Todd on there. I understand the conversation, but he does offer a lot of expertise that he knows because of what he's been doing, so...
The mayor and I had a discussion earlier this evening, and I think it kind of goes hand in hand with some of what you're saying, Dan. And that is, I think we could do a much better job than we have in the past, bringing these folks up to speed and getting them trained, giving them the materials they need to do their job. I would like to see us focus way more, because this is a really critical board. And especially that because they wear two hats, you know, as a Board of Adjustment as well. And the other thing is attendance is huge if you, to make this succeed. So you gotta quorum week, month by month. But I do think that we absolutely need to focus more on better training for all these folks instead of them just learning by default over three years or four years while they're on there.
When I first came on the board, I know that Ken and Jill did offer that training, but I don't think it was mandatory. They just said, you know, if you want to, here it is. And we're offering it at four different times or whatever it was. So their wish was that everybody would go to a training session. Bruce, I think you're right on track.
I would ask what potential there is for conflict of interest. I mean, I know First District, I've dealt with them on my business side. I know that they are the major driving force behind the county and city mapping and things of that nature. Is there anything that Plan Commission Board of Adjustments that would directly conflict with First District's doing their business?
So I could provide, Councilman, from a legal perspective. So my understanding of First District is that it is an intergovernmental, it's a non, it's an incorporated body that has incorporated by virtue of the constituent government entities underneath it. So they all participate. They all sort of play a role in funding the institution. In response or in return, they get, you know, a number of different services, including a regional planning kind of faculty, technical assistance and whatnot. And, you know, in terms of conflicts, you look at fundamentally whether the interest that a person appears to have in an issue is different than the interest of the general public, that the general public would demand of someone on an issue working for the greater public good. So you look at the roles that, you know, would be, would be served in the Plan Commission, and you look at what First District does for the city. They provide essentially the regional development documents and liaison work, whether it's between the county and the city through the Joint Jurisdiction Board or through the drafting of the Comprehensive Plan, which becomes the bible for city development, which makes it a very big deal. But the purpose of that document is to provide sort of a cohesive tapestry of development between the various jurisdictions in East Central, South Dakota. So the question would be, in a roundabout way, what are the conflicts of interest there? Their reason for existing is arguably in support of what the public interest is in comprehensive planning. Now, their conflict of interest could arise potentially if something is approved by Todd that shouldn't be approved because of the fact that the person bringing it before the board or the Plan Commission is a First District member. I mean, it could otherwise happen, you know, as with any other member of the board or Plan Commission, if a family member brought something before the board, if a business partner brought something before the board, if their own property was somehow implicated by something brought before the board or the Plan Commission. But in terms of Todd's, you know, connection to First District, given the fact that First District's, you know, focus is on regional development, I don't know how they would be able to pick one jurisdiction over the other. And if it is regional development, they're probably best positioned to provide that perspective. Now, that's not to say that there aren't, again, personal conflicts of interest that could potentially arise. But in those circumstances, you know, I think it's fair to say they would know what they are, and I would know what they are, and they would recuse on those issues. But that does not consider the policy concerns of conflict of interest.
And for me, I'm looking at the public welfare and how best to serve the public welfare. Is your fear that the public interest would be harmed by Todd Kayes serving on this board? Or more fully served because he knows a lot? I mean, it, to me, there is absolutely no fear whatsoever that the public interest would be harmed by some sort of conflict if Todd didn't pick up on it and forgot to refuse, recuse himself. I'm completely convinced that it's in the public interest for him to serve on this board. That's why I recommend his appointment.
I'm very respectful of the point brought forward on this, and it's a good discussion to have. I'm on a state board. We've had a tremendous amount of discussion on conflict of interest, and I've had several discussions with Justin on this. Just one point I'm thinking about as we're going through this discussion. When we have Planning Commission, issues come up here. I'm always grateful that we've got three guys sitting on this council that have experience with that. And I really rely heavily because I, between Mike, Bruce and Dan, we've got decades of experience on there. And I rely on those three guys when those issues come up. So I, where I'm on the fence on this one, I understand the point being made, but I do see we've got, we're losing some big experience in that board. And that's kind of giving me some concern.
Would anyone else like to weigh in? We have a motion to approve the appointments as listed on the table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please.
For the motion to approve the appointments as listed. Albertson?
Yes.
Bueller? Danforth? Lalum?
Yes.
Roby?
Yes.
Solom?
Yes.
Thorson? Vilhauer?
No.
Wy? It was 6-4, 3 against. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number five is request by the Ventiques Car Club to close off a portion of Kemp Avenue as well as the south end of the city-owned parking lot next to County Fair for the 38th Annual Ventiques Rod Run and Camp Out Event Saturday, September 9th. Shelley?
I can start off the conversation. I was hoping somebody from the Ventiques Car Club would be here.
Yes.
Bill Reeffenberger came in and asked if it would be appropriate to be on the agenda, to actually officially request permission to close off a portion of Kemp Avenue, as you always have in the past, for this event. But this year, they're also asking to take a portion of the city-owned parking lot next to County Fair to put the food vendors, and I don't know if you have any other vendors, to get them out of the sidewalk area and away from other businesses so there isn't competing. and away from other businesses so there isn't competing, um, um, issues with food sales. So, that's kinda where we left it, and I, the mayor was okay with that, and, and we thought that was appropriate. And, and Bill had said, I'm not sure if we've ever really asked permission, but there's a lot of other people that come to the council and ask for official permission to close off streets and public right-of-way, so he thought maybe it would be, um, a good time to do that, and then also to talk about closing off, um, is it the south part of the, of the public-owned parking lot facing Kemp? And for this event as well, to allow those vendors to be there, and then, um, I'll let you kinda add anything.
The, the parking lot on the south side of the senior center, uh, people that don't wanna register for the cars will park their cars there. And, which is fine, and, 'cause it's not mandatory to necessarily register with the Ventix Club. But we've had some problems with too many vendors and too little space. So we thought if we could combine them and put them all in one general area, other than some of the private store, you know, we, we can't, we can't move them, but the ones that come to town, uh, if we could put them in one general location, we thought that would be the best place when you think of, of Kemp. And then, in addition, it's not on the, on the board, but in the last few years, we've outgrown Kemp Avenue. So we go down Maple to First Street South, and, and we've outgrown that also. So what, what we'd request would be also on Second Street to do the same thing as we do on Maple, from Kemp south to First Street. We ran out of room, and we don't wanna block the street, the through street by the post office. And if you, if you go across, what would that be, Fourth? On the west side of the post office, um, it gets to be an awful long walk, because we start, for you that aren't familiar with it, we start, we leave the driveway open going into the towers down by Viter Body Shop, and we've parked four cars across the whole length to the post office, and all the way down to First Avenue South, and it's full, I mean, it's four cars across all the way. We tried, we try to leave room for emergency, um, hopefully our fire truck drivers are good drivers. Because it gets pretty tight, but that would be our other request. And I've talked to Chief McPeak, and he said that, you know, we put the signage out and everything. It's been a little more of a challenge now that there's parking allowed after, after two o'clock on Kemp, but we're gonna try to get our signs out and located so we can alleviate some of that problem, too.
Bill, are you looking to take just the senior citizen parking lot, or the one, County Fair and the senior citizen?
No, just the senior citizen, I think that's the one they're talking about, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
It sounded like they were looking at putting the food vendors in the city lot next to, or south of.
Yeah, that's kinda the way that Bill had made it sound, only part of it, they, not the part closest to County Fair, but the, the part that's, that like, the part that's closer to Kemp, that.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I, that's kinda the way he made it sound, that there would be part of that public parking lot.
Be down by the senior, as many as we can get in there, probably there'll be some in the street there, and then east from there. And there might be one or two that spill over to the west from that, but depending on how many, I'm not sure what Kay has lined up. Kay Solberg does that, so.
What are the two streets, uh, off Kemp?
Maple.
And what was the other one?
Ray, you wanna, Ray, you wanna put my screen up?
It'd be, it'd be, um, do you remember where White and Fox Funeral Chapel, that street, I think that's Second Street? We leave Broadway open, 'cause that's a through street for, you know, for emergency, and then the same with what's right on the west edge of the post office, that's, you know, kind of a three, through street for people to be able to get to the post office.
Bill, how long would the streets be closed, what, what would the timeframe be, is that like?
Well, we.
Seven until two, or?
I'd get down about six, 'cause we have people that start coming that wanna park in certain places, but, um, six till about four.
How many, how many, Bill, how many entries do you expect this year?
Probably in the neighborhood of three to four hundred again. And that doesn't count the ones that don't register?
Bill, we're just talking amongst ourselves, um, why close off two streets, why not just close Maple, north and south, make it just one street?
Because our registration is on, right by, uh, Makepeace Jewelry, so we need to have that area for the van and, and the registration table and so forth, and there's, there's, there's businesses there, whereas, uh, like Tackers and so forth, and there's, there's also a city parking lot that people can take advantage of. And, and if we blocked it off, they couldn't, whereas if you go the other way, um, there's really not a business along Second Street that would be affected, there's a, the Congregational Church and, uh, the new, uh, oh, shoot. It's another church now in the old funeral home, there's two churches there, but we shouldn't have, you know, we wouldn't have a problem with them on a Saturday. And we do block off Maple, there, I, I understand there's some businesses there, but, um, most of the businesses like the traffic, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? There's no action required, right?
Yeah, if they wanna just give, officially just make a motion to give permission for them to close off the streets that he mentioned and use the city-owned parking lots.
To me, too, is, he was always kind of the liaison, and then he said, we should probably just come in and kinda bring everybody up to speed, uh, 'cause it's a pretty big event, and it, it, uh, kinda continues to grow a little bit, so.
Hey Shane, is that, look in the south side of that parking lot then, by, by County Fair? Next one over.
This, this is the parking lot that I believe they're requesting to shut off, there's multiple driveways coming off of Third Street, so if they wanted to, um, block off half of it, they could probably do it fairly easily.
I, I think it's the one to the east of theirs, isn't it, the senior building, isn't that the one up?
There's not much room there, I would think that you would gain more space us, utilizing the public parking lot rather than the senior parking lot.
Cause it, cause when Bill was in, I mean, he mentioned the County Fair parking lot, and he didn't want the whole thing, he just wanted.
Part of it, okay.
Part of it.
That's, that's fine.
So I, I just assume, I didn't really, we didn't even really talk about the senior center parking lot.
And I haven't been at the last couple of meetings, but initially it was, they talked about the south part, like where it says three oh one east Kemp, there where the cars are parked at a diagonal. Because, you know, the food vendors don't need a big area, but they have to have room, you know, for their trailers and so forth. So, that, my understanding was that, but it could very well have grown to that, 'cause I haven't talked to Kay, so maybe for, for safety's sake, uh, maybe both of those, I don't think we'd need very deep to the north on the, on the public parking lot there.
No, he was kinda thinking like, that, that kinda that first row of cars, not even that, just kinda that first. Yeah, he didn't think they'd need.
Because we block off, yeah, we block off, is that the street there, is that Third?
Yep, that's Third.
Yeah, we block that off so people can't drive through anyways, so.
That would make it easier for them to get their trailers in and out, too, if you're using the bigger parking lot versus the one that I believe there's a concrete with a couple of trees in the middle of that still.
Right, you mean on the, by the senior?
Yeah, yeah, you could always.
Yeah, there's a, there's a boulevard there.
Yeah, you could use that for cars if they wanna.
That County Fair parking lot, you may wanna give plenty, several days' notice, 'cause a lot of them cars are parked there.
That's, that's. If we block off the street, like we intend on doing, they need a place, you know, the apartments and, and, uh, the workout, you know, the place, the workout there and so forth. So we don't wanna, we, we like to leave places for the public to park, too, of course, 'cause they're, they come down, so.
Okay, so, we're talking about Kemp, a portion of Kemp, a portion of Second Street East, a portion of Maple Street East.
Right.
And a portion of Third Street East.
No, Third Street, we just, we just close off the street at Kemp, we don't go north.
Oh, you don't block the whole street?
No, no, because there's access to the senior center, and then there's also access to the public parking there.
You'd almost have to block out part of that, though, that one entrance so that they.
Right, like I say, we, I'll coordinate with, with Kay on that, but, yeah, 'cause we go down and we get the cones from the, uh, street department, and, uh.
Well, I'm going to include a portion of Third in the motion, just in case.
Kay?
Let me make the motion on that.
Do I need to, I'm gonna just repeat it for clarity, a request by, the motion is, um, to honor the request by the Ventix Car Club to close off a portion of Kemp as well as the south end of the city-owned parking lot next to County Fair, a portion of Maple Street, a portion of Second Street East, and a portion of Third Street East for the thirty-eighth annual Ventix Rod Run and Camp Out event Saturday, September ninth. We have a motion by Lalum, seconded by Solom. All in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
You realize here, there is a mayor's award, too, you'll have to pick from about four hundred cars. One, yeah.
That'll be a tough one.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, application for a special event retail on-off sale malt beverage license to Lake City Slow Pitch Association from eight AM Friday, August twelfth, two thousand seventeen, until ten PM Saturday, August thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, for a tournament at Cook Complex and Premier Softball Field. I would like to open the public hearing, and Shelley, would you start by your comments, if you have any?
Um, I, I don't have any comments other than, um, at the time that the agenda was published, the Slow Pitch Association did not know if they could comply with all of the insurance requirements that we have in ordinance, and, um, they were able to do that, and that's why number six was taken off of the agenda, at least for this first tournament. Um, we'll talk about the second tournament, um, they need to know a total number of teams before they can comply with that, so we can talk about that, but at least for this one, everything that's been required in ordinance has been met for this special event license, and I know the, the Slow Pitch, um, Association people are here, so I can let them give you some more information, since this is the first time this has been requested for this event, so.
Okay, it's actually the, that's, uh, the twelfth is Saturday and the thirteenth is Sunday, it's actually those two dates, the dates were wrong. Like Shelley said, we haven't had slow pitch state tournament water town since ninety-seven.
I'm sorry, would you please state your name for the.
Oh, sorry, Dwayne Meyer.
Thank you.
I'm with Lake City Slow Pitch, and I'm also the Northeast Area Commissioner for Slow Pitch Softball. And it's been ninety-seven since we've had a state tournament for men's slow pitch softball, so this is the first one we've had for twenty years, and we've got these beautiful diamonds that the city built for us, and they're wonderful. And it's a good opportunity for us to get more slow pitch softball. And then, every tournament that I've been through, a lot of these state tournaments serve malt beverages, so.
Anyone have any questions?
We're on item seven, right?
We're on item seven, yes, item six was removed.
Just for the record.
Because you'd met all the requirements.
Yes, we have.
So, the, item number seven, it, we, you need to know how many teams there will be before.
Before we can do the next one for co-ed, we have to know exactly how many teams, 'cause we go by per team for this event, and they do it a one-time event each time. So the first one we have for this weekend was thirty-eight teams we have. So we paid so much per team to get this, get this liability license, and then the one we have for coming up for co-ed, we'll know probably like the week before co-ed, but it only takes like twenty minutes maybe to get the liability insurance, so.
Mayor, just for the record, I'm recusing myself from item seven as well as items eight and nine due to potential conflict of interest.
And, and if I could, please, um, when you had mentioned the dates, uh, on the application itself, it shows August twelfth to August thirteenth. What, what dates, I mean, you're saying those are not the right dates?
It's August twelfth is, is Saturday, correct?
Oh, okay.
Yes, and August thirteenth is Sunday.
Okay.
They have Friday down, I believe.
So.
It's actually Saturday from eight to ten.
Okay, so the actual dates are correct?
Are correct, but, yes.
Okay.
Are these over twenty-one?
Yes, this is adult slow pitch, yes, they are, most, ninety-five percent of them are adults, and we bought wristbands, and we are gonna card. So we have wristbands and, when we do card, and then we put wristbands on the guys, so we know when they come up that they're old enough.
Dwayne, will there be coolers allowed then in these, if you're selling with this?
There'll be coolers, but no alcohol beverages allowed.
Okay.
It's my understanding that you went before the Board of Adjustment here recently, and that there's no zoning issues, or that we're, we're, you're in compliance there, is that right?
Yes, everything will be in the, in the ball dime, nothing will be drank outside of the parking lot.
The, the people that'll be checking the IDs, are they, uh, will they have the ID state program? Do you have that education that they offer?
No, 'cause this is a first-time deal for us, we've never done this before, so this is all new to us. But I was in Pierre last weekend for men's slow pitch softball, and all those guys were adults, and I mean, they weren't checking IDs there, but we plan on doing it here.
So they'll have to have a wristband in order to purchase or consume?
Correct.
Dwayne, just out of curiosity, what do you anticipate for team, a number of teams for that co-ed tournament?
We, last year in Sioux Falls, they had, I believe, seventy-five. So we're anticipating anywhere between eighty and ninety, 'cause it's gonna be a three-day event, that'd actually start on a Friday. Depends on the teams, if it starts on a Friday, then would you use Cook Complex, too, as an overflow? So they're anticipating at least eighty to ninety teams for co-ed?
Hey, Dwayne, uh, just an FYI, the Chamber does have one of those ID checkers for South Dakota.
Okay, thank you.
Just a FYI for you.
I just, before we vote or, or make a motion, I assume we will, um, just wanna say thanks to you folks for all the good work you guys do with the softball programs.
No, thank you, guys, I mean, we needed this coming for years, so.
All right, anyone else? I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Moved by Solom and seconded by Vilhauer, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight is application for a special event retail on-off sale malt beverage license to Lake City Slow Pitch Association from eight AM Friday, September fifteen, two thousand seventeen, until ten PM Sunday, September seventeen, two thousand seventeen, for a tournament at Cook Complex and Premier Softball Field. And, um, I'm going to, um, ask later after the, I close the public hearing for the motion to be conditioned upon meeting insurance requirements in, um, ordinance two point zero one eighteen, um, just to get that right, but for now, I will open the public hearing.
Dwayne, that's pretty much the same, same deal?
Yeah, this is co-ed, this is mostly men and women together, and this is probably a bigger event. We think, I shouldn't say that, but I've been around softball a lot, we think, uh, we ain't gonna go any farther.
Everything else will be the same?
It's a bigger event, yeah.
Okay.
You might not, uh, since these are coming up right around the corner, you might not have to be able to do that ID state program, but hopefully you can bring these more into town, and it'd be, if you could check into that, I don't think it's very expensive, but just to have that training.
Sure.
Uh, just to maybe protect yourselves a little bit better, too.
Anything else? Okay, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Second.
Motion by Albertson, seconded by Lalum.
Including the insurance benefits.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries, thank you. Item number nine, application for a temporary location transfer and return of a retail on-sale liquor license owned by Number One Casino, Inc., doing business as Number One Casino, as follows, for the period of four PM Saturday, September sixteen, until two AM Sunday, September seventeen, from one thousand six fourteenth Street Southeast to nineteen ten West Kemp. I will open the public hearing. Is anyone here to talk about this?
Mayor, they will not be here, they did send me an email that they are gonna be gone, they didn't realize it was coming up here. Basically, the email stated that it was for a large wedding, and they were approached by the, um, future groom and bride to, to do it, and they, they were actually approached from another business, sent them to them, 'cause they had something else going on, so. But it's basically a large wedding, is what it is.
Makes sense. Any other comments? I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Moved by Bueller, seconded by Danforth, all in favor signify by.
I got a question, Mayor, where is nineteen ten West Kemp?
That's the Expo Center.
Expo. Oh, that's the Expo Center, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I've, every time this comes up, I've always got the same question, uh, maybe it'll finally make sense to me, so they actually have, they ca- they cannot sell at their existing location during that time period, correct?
At, at least under this liquor license.
Okay.
They're not supposed to.
Do, I mean, do we monitor that or pay any attention to that?
I, I don't know, I guess that would be up to, to the PD, but as far as the finance office, no.
Next time it comes up, I'll ask the same question again.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, yeah, they're, they're basically picking up that license and moving it and covering a different location where they can sell and consume liquor. So, that's why we have to transfer it back or it'd be at the Expo Building forever.
But, but in fairness, Glenn, to your ongoing persistence on that question, shouldn't we, as part of the process in this, shouldn't we be checking that?
Yes.
I mean, we, and I don't know if we do, but I'm not sure how the police would even know that they should be checking it, but it seems like if we're moving it from here to there, we should be checking that here isn't using it.
I do think, I do think they also have a malt beverage license at this casino, so they can still serve beer and, yeah.
Uh, just for those of us that forgot and are new members, didn't we make a change about the, the event licenses where you could basically duplicate it? Can you refresh me what we did with that?
What, what do you mean duplicate? Oh, they, we, the bad thing is, is that in that special event license, you, um, as a council excluded liquor. And so you can only get, so somebody from Second Street could get an additional special event malt beverage license, keep theirs, have this one and still host the function. But liquor is not included in that special events license, so the only way somebody can go to the Expo Building and have a function that serves liquor is by transferring somebody's liquor license to that event.
And they cannot serve at the original location?
They, under this liquor license, they should not, because they are physically, you know, I mean, we're physically picking it up and putting it under another, if you look at the application, they're, they're using another total legal description that they're transferring for that amount of time to another legal description. So it's no longer covering that venue, it's covering this one.
Any other discussion? I think I took motion and second. So, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Nine B, uh, application for a temporary location transfer and return of retail on-sale liquor license owned by Number One Casino, Inc., doing business as Number One Casino, for the period after two oh one AM Sunday, September seventeenth, from nineteen ten West Kemp, back to one thousand six fourteenth Street Southeast. I will open the public hearing. Seeing no comment, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve moving this back.
So moved.
Moved by Lalum. Second by Danforth. Any other discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number ten, resolution extending a moratorium on receiving applications for off-premise signs within the city of Watertown, resolution number seventeen dash twenty-five. Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is extending the moratorium, uh, a little bit further. You may recall that the moratorium was adopted in resolution seventeen oh four by this council on February sixth, twenty seventeen, and was effective the same date. Uh, that, uh, re-establishment of the moratorium was, uh, a reflection of the fact that there was a moratorium that had been established back in twenty sixteen initially, uh, with resolution sixteen oh one. The thought behind these resolutions was to ensure that as the city went through its internal, uh, and now public process of vetting proposed revisions to the sign code, that there wouldn't be, uh, a number of parties seeking to, um, you know, uh, take advantage of the situat- uh, well, that, that con- conveys a negative connotation, but, uh, that I don't mean, but that there was a need to hold off on certain, uh, off-premise advertising permits, uh, because of the fact that the city was looking at its ordinances, uh, in the sign code. What I can tell you is that, uh, as you'll notice by this draft, it, it doesn't extend it too far out. And the reason for that is because the sign code, uh, proposed sign code revisions are going to be before the Plan Commission as sort of the first official stop as it moves up to your, uh, to your, your body here on Au- uh, August the tenth. And there, the Plan Commission will either decide to recommend, uh, to approve or not to approve, um, and, uh, if they recommend to approve, it will come before this body at its first reading on August twenty-first. The August tenth meeting is a public hearing, uh, and obviously the public is encouraged to attend all of our meetings, but, uh, that one in particular, uh, you know, allows for, uh, public, uh, input. The thought then with this particular date is if all goes to plan, the effective date will be before the, uh, extension here proposed in this resolution lapses. So, uh, with that, I would, uh, be happy to answer any questions you have.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Moved by Danforth and seconded by Solomon. Any discussion?
Rather than a specific date, do we just wanna specify till a new ordinance is in place?
We, we certainly could do that, Councilman, um, if, if anything, I, we, we could do that. Uh, the only thought is, is that this provides a convenient way of providing updates periodically to the council and is sort of a chiding for us to get things going, including especially, so.
Seeing no discussion, um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number eleven, consideration of pyrotechnics or open flame permit application for fireworks display at five 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 South Lake Drive on August eleventh, two thousand seventeen, from ten o'clock to ten thirty PM. And I, um, would like to clarify, the state law requires city council authorization, but this must be for a public display, correct?
Because, uh, uh, Mayor, this permit is requested for a timeframe outside of the July twenty-seventh to, uh, the first Sunday after the Fourth of July, as well as December twenty-eighth through January first, per SDCL, uh, oh boy, thirty, uh, per, uh, section thirteen of the chapter in which, uh, uh, fireworks are dealt with in state statute. Uh, the only option is, uh, for this to be considered by the council a public display, that is correct. If, if the council views this as a public display per state statute, it can approve this permit.
Right, we, we cannot approve it unless he changes the application from private to public, so the applicant is seated.
That's fine, I can change it.
Figured you might say that. All right, do we have a motion to approve this with the change? Moved by Albertson. Second, second by Vilhauer, discussion?
Yeah. Mike, we, it is, is this open to the public?
Yes, it's, well, I mean, it's being held at a private country club, but, I mean, it's the member guest, it's a huge tournament and there's gonna be hundreds of people there, so.
Okay, so, but is it open to the public?
Yes.
Okay. That's the point, if it, if it was restricted, then it would be a private, in which case we could not do it.
Right, we can't.
That's why it's important, so.
Yes, no, it is open to the public, it's a public event, so I'm sure they would welcome the more people.
Other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
I have one quick question, um, now, this is gonna be the standard procedure from here forward, is come in front of the council for any applications?
Yes.
Cause I have another one coming up August twenty-seventh for the racetrack, so.
Yes, and, and we're changing our ordinance to that effect as well, that probably won't have happened yet, but meanwhile, this is allowable in state law to do it this way.
Is it possible to handle that issue today, now, pending the approval of the Fire Department and an application being made? Or would you like me to re, um, come back in front of you guys in two weeks?
You, by law, you'd have to come back again.
Okay, okay, no problem, thank you.
Thank you. Item twelve, authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement for truancy officer services at the Watertown School District for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. Ryan?
Uh, this is pretty self-explanatory, it's something that we do on an annual basis. Can you hear me now?
You wanna state your name for the record?
Ryan Remmers, with the Police Department. Um, we do this on an annual basis to provide truancy officer services for the school district. The school district, uh, district is obligated by state statute to provide, um, truancy officers. So we do this through this agreement each year whereby all of our officers become truancy officers, um, for the school district. We do that without, uh, any kind of compensation from the school district or anything, we're not, uh, obligated, they, we don't get any kind of benefits from the school, um, in any form of financial benefits or anything like that, we just act as their truancy officers every year, so we come in front of the board and, and, uh, get you guys to bless this every year. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Do I have a motion to approve the authorization? Moved by Roby, second by Albertson. Any more discussion?
I'm, I'm looking at this, um, do we need to change this? It has July twenty-seventeen, but it has Steve Thorson, Rochelle Lovers, needs, in the signature portion of it?
No, it, it, it just, it came to us after their board and so, um, they just said, cross the name out and put the new name and they were good with that.
Stand on and update that.
No, I, yeah, I asked and they, they were okay with it.
Okay.
Thank you for noticing that.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number thirteen, authorization for the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Veterans Cemetery Concept to be located on city land north of the Watertown Regional Airport. Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. This body likely recalls here earlier this year, uh, approving a letter of support for the Veterans Cemetery Concept. And ultimately, uh, the thought was with a new city council, a new mayor, that, uh, there was a need in order to provide a, uh, a letter of support going forward, that the letter of support be signed by, uh, the new mayor and, uh, that it be approved by the new city council. The substance of the letter has not really been changed except to add a sentence, uh, on the, uh, in the paragraph, uh, the second paragraph here. So the second paragraph had read, uh, the last sentence in the prior letter, furthermore, the city pledges that it will revise local ordinance, period. This letter is modified to include the phrase "to allow for the cemetery," period. The reason for that, uh, addition to the end of that sentence was to clarify what local ordinances needed to be revised and that ordinance in particular is section six point oh eight oh three of our ordinances, which restrict the number of cemeteries within the city boundaries. At this point, it's three, uh, two that exist, one that has an option to exist. This would then, uh, if, uh, the plans came to fruition, necessitate a fourth, uh, cemetery be allowed within our city boundaries. The other obvious change being, uh, Mayor Karen denoted as the signatory.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the authorization?
So moved.
Moved by Lalum. Second? Second by Bueller, discussion?
I just wanna make sure that we reiterate what we reiterated back at the time that this was first signed, and that is that, that this letter does not convey in a, a commitment of any city funding at this point, only the land and zoning and concept, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Did you wanna say something?
Yeah, uh, the, the, we had talked before about the city maintaining the cemetery. This, uh, has not been decided or agreed upon yet by the council. You say that, that that would, that's the only, that's all that, that's included in it, nothing else. My, my question is, is would the maintenance of the cemetery, the upkeep every year of it be included in that?
Be included in the letter or? In the motion, or?
Uh... That, that, you would be in agreement to, to do that?
I think we'd need a dollar amount and a, um, discussion before we could, and we'd have to look at the budget to see, um, where that would fit.
Yeah.
I, I didn't realize that was part of your request.
No, I, I was just surprised, I, I just assumed that it would be in there, because it was discussed earlier. Uh, uh, the dollar amounts and, and what, uh, was necessary as far as maintenance is involved.
Okay.
But, n- that, that's fine, the, the, the letter of approval, w- we appreciate that very much, uh, giving support to the cemetery, because with, this is very important, us to get started in the fundraising process.
I, I must have misunderstood, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I realized it was a financial request.
I believe it's just the, and a request to update the letter is really what we're looking at on this particular item is, is all, it's, it's, nothing like we discussed at the last meeting, this is just to update the letter.
Yes.
Well, I think it's important that, that we all understand exactly what is coming from this approval for this letter. And my, my thinking was, is that you would be looking for and wanting from this council or expecting from this council, a financial commitment in regards to the maintenance and stuff, that's truly what, if I'm in your shoes, that's what I'm gonna be looking for?
Yes.
And this does not give that to you, I want you to, that's why I brought it up, I just want everybody to understand that this does not make that commitment, okay? And that, from your perspective, that's something that this council needs to get addressed for them to really go forward, in my mind. So that's gonna have to be something that we look at probably in the twenty eighteen budget process and see if and where that fits, so.
Okay.
Now, Mayor, is there any, the conveyance of that land for this purpose, does that take any public meeting for that? Does the public have a right to come in and say, "No, it's our land, no"? I mean, it's, that's...
That is, that is correct, Councilman.
That's another caveat to this.
This, this would fall under chapter six dash five of the South Dakota Codified Law, where the city is empowered to transfer, i.e. donate the land to a nonprofit, uh, governmental authority, non-governmental authority, nonprofit, um, that utilizes it for a public purpose.
So we can do that without?
You, you would need to have a resolution that, and, and ergo, it would need to ha- come before the city council and receive approval there.
But not necessarily a public hearing?
That's, that's correct.
But it would...
But it would have to be publicly done by resolution.
Correct, Mayor.
So there's, there is a possibility, I mean, albeit probably remote, but there could be public input on that, that would certainly need to be considered, correct?
True.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that, too. Okay, I, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that too, cause it's.
But I guess I've got a follow-up now from what I just heard you say, Justin, is that we need to convey that to a nonprofit organization that would take ownership of that land, is that what I heard you say?
That is, that is correct, so the, the, the specific language here is, um, that the city can convey and transfer any real or personal property which is held or owned by it, the title to which has been obtained and which is not held for public use or which is about to be abandoned for public purposes to another political subdivision or nonprofit corporation for public charitable or humanitarian purposes and accommodation without offering the property for sale and without requiring the political subdivision or nonprofit to pay for the property. So there are a couple of hoops. The first is that, uh, basically the council needs to make a declaration that the property would not be held for public use is going to be abandoned, essentially becoming surplus, if you will. Um, and then it can then only dedicate the property to a nonprofit corporation for public charitable or humanitarian purposes. So the, the entity that this would be donated to would need to be incorporated under the laws of the state of South Dakota for noncor, non, nonprofit entities.
Okay, I guess that's, that's where I'm going with my questioning is, I mean, what, what entity, I mean, is there an entity in place that this would, in existence, that this would be donated to?
Dennis, uh, was unable to be here tonight.
He's here.
He is here. He is here.
He appeared.
The, uh, ownership of the land, it, it was our idea that the land would be owned by the city of Watertown, that this would be a city veterans cemetery. The veterans were gonna pay to set the cemetery up, put the road through, do everything necessary and, and the city was, w- w- we were gonna ask them to maintain it for us.
That would solve that problem.
Somebody like Tom, the manager at Mount Hope, he manages that cemetery, he would also manage the veterans cemetery but under different rules and regulations, under the rules and regulations that would be made up uh, with the veterans and, and the city that would make up, because obviously we only want veterans buried there and their spouses and, uh, any dependent children that they have. We would use the same guidelines as the federal VA system uses in a federal cemetery. But, uh, th- those are our thoughts, that it would be, uh, city property.
Like the veterans section of our cemetery?
Th- th- that's correct. A- a- except in this case with this cemetery, the veterans would have a, uh, a, a say-so in the planning of the cemetery and the building of it. And raising the money to do this. And, uh, 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 again, uh, we're asking, uh, that the land be city-owned land. This is a city veterans cemetery and, and that you would maintain it. And, and, uh, we had talked about cost roughly within a couple thousand, the cost to maintain it every year was twenty thousand that, uh, we had discussed with you before. Th- th- these are, are I, our ideas and our hopes.
Okay, I, and I, I think that this letter of support is fine and I doubt if anyone has any problem with it. I don't think it obligates us to anything further at this point, but we do need to address that, that, you know, make sure that we can use this land for that purpose, if there's any legal reason we couldn't, we need to explore that. I don't know of any. Um, and the maintenance cost and how we would budget for that. And, um, ultimately those, those are other decisions that are, um, not bearing on this decision tonight.
Well, we appreciate, uh, everything, all of the consideration that you've given us. You're kinda holding us, uh, like a puppet right now. Is, should we start the fundraising process or will you approve the maintenance if we raise the money to start the cemetery? If, if you were to say no, that's a lot of money we have to give back to the people.
I'm just gonna put in two cents as the finance person and you can take it for what you wish. Um, just sitting here listening, I don't know where you got the twenty thousand dollars from, but.
We got it from, we went to the person who plows the snow out there, got the price from them. We got a price on mowing from several different people.
Okay, um, just right now, just the way semantics work, if, if you want our current cemetery staff, we have two full-time staff people and we have one piece of equipment that thaws ground and digs holes. So those would have to be transported all across town, um, you know, to be used unless we bought more equipment and we'd probably need additional staff. Um, it, it's just, you know, I, I mean, so I don't know where those numbers came from, but I, I don't know that, that I would feel comfortable at all, um, if this council asked me, do you feel confident with that twenty thousand dollar number, I would say no. Um, and, and I think as tight as our, our budget season is and we haven't even gotten to me telling them kinda how tight this whole thing has been until our budget hearings, uh, I, I, I guess I don't, I don't feel confident going any farther than just a letter of, of support saying that it would be a great idea logistic, logistically if, if it could happen, but, um, I, I have some concerns of the ongoing perpetual maintenance, especially when there's no cost there. So, so there's really no cost, the city can, can recoup. Um, so I, I guess, that, that's just my, my two cents and, and like I said, you guys can take it for what it's, it's worth to have some more discussion.
If you deal with finances, you must be, uh, you knowledgeable on the, on the income that a cemetery like that will take in? I'm not, uh, but I do know that if we provide crematorial walls, that these niches, uh, will be sold and that the plots will, will be sold and that, and that the, uh, Department of Defense will pay for.
For the veterans, I thought they were supposed to be given for nothing, I thought they were at no cost.
There'll be, well, we, the, uh, the government is billed, the government pays for that plot.
There is a plot allowance, allowance for the veteran and, uh, uh, we, we spent, uh, at least a couple hours with Tom Weeks up at the cemetery going over all, all of this information and, uh, he looked at, he didn't have a problem with this. Yes, he would probably have to transport his, uh, uh, backhoe to dig a grave. Uh, it would probably be a little bit more, uh, work on his part and everything to do this rather than digging the grave up in Mount Hope. But, uh, he didn't really see any problems in, uh, doing this and working it out. And we did get, uh, uh, from Pinky Burns what he would charge on a normal winter. I know when I was on the council, we appropriated three hundred thousand for snow removal, some years we went over that and had to appropriate more and some years we didn't. Uh, so, uh, it, he, he thought that, that twenty thousand range, uh, was pretty viable. And, uh, as far as heating up the plot and everything, it would be just similar to them being buried out, uh, at this proposed cemetery versus being buried up at Mount Hope. Not a lot of extra cost to it other than transporting equipment to do that.
Rea- realistically, I, I know I asked this the last time you guys were here just recently, realistically, if your fundraising goes as you're hoping it would, when would we, I mean, let's say that we do agree to provide ongoing maintenance, that's, that's an if, uh, when would, uh, costs start to kick in that the city would be responsible for?
Well, we would, we would hope to get it going next summer. Uh, and start the construction in the, in the spring and raise the money over the winter here. The, the big, big crux to this is actually the maintenance. We have lots of veterans that would volunteer to do that right now, but in twenty, thirty years, we're not gonna be around. That's why the VA requires that a entity, uh, ha, uh, agrees to maintain the cemetery. And, uh, you know, you could raise, uh, you know, several thousands of dollars to take care of it, but if that runs out in the future, uh, there's, you know, we, we, none of us know what might be happening in forty, fifty, sixty years, you know? So, so we're, we're asking for something that I think, uh, uh, really that the veterans deserve. I looked up and, uh, the VA spends six hundred and sixty-six million in the state of South Dakota. So we do get sales tax and stuff off the veterans that not only the VA spends, but what Don does and I do and everything else. So we are contributing factors to, uh, uh, the revenue that the city takes in. And, uh, this is a very important part to the cemetery. Without it, I, uh, have my doubts that we could go forward. Cause you need somebody that is willing to perpetually take care of it after, you know, like I said, so, uh, we've got several volunteers that do volunteer work all the time and they says, oh heck, I'll go out and mow it every week, you know? But that person might not be around in ten, fifteen, twenty years, so we, the, the VA requires that either a state, if it's a state cemetery, or if it's a federal cemetery, or a Native American cemetery, or that, that they sign on to maintain it. So.
Dennis, what, um, why, why could this not be a, an area that is adjacent to or part of our current city cemetery?
Uh, there's, there's no reason it couldn't be. Uh, the veterans part filled up not too long ago and they, uh, they expanded it to another area and that. We just, uh, think that the small cost, I look at the, the budget of what, forty-some million now? Oh, twenty thousand being spent on veterans that were requesting is a very small part for the service that most veterans have done for this country.
Logistically, can we do that, what can we create as a public cemetery with input from private enterprise as to how and how we can put the cemetery in place, is that, is that allowable? I mean, basically what I heard is that it had to go to a corporation to be needed the, the land over, even if it's for zero and then we maintain it, are we now maintaining private?
Well, it would appear though.
I, I know they don't want that, but is that how it has to be done?
Well, if, if I understand this correctly, if this council at some point were going to agree to, to fund this operationally, then we aren't conveying the land, it's our land, they're just paying for the, for the creation of it as far as the, the infrastructure in the, the cemetery itself, we would retain ownership of that land, so there is no conveyance at that point. If we don't do anything with it, then there's probably a few options we would have, one is certainly to convey the land.
Right.
So it depends on what this council does.
But can they put in, input into how the thing is put into it, I mean?
We, we have that done all the time, I mean, not in cemeteries obviously, but we do in, but our public buildings, we have public input, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's like the senior setter, for instance, uh, the boys and girls club structure there, um, that was put up through partnerships between, now, I, I do believe that those are both incorporated entities, um, so that might be something to potentially work out. Maybe it isn't an issue, I haven't done enough research on it. I mean, another option is, uh, you know, the, the long-term lease as a vehicle by which, you know, essentially the city, by the terms of the lease is bound to certain terms of performance. There it wouldn't be like, for instance, the prohibition on private, uh, entities dictating to the city how to do public improvements for wholly private purposes, you know, it, it, it would fall into that category, um, so there, there are ways.
I, I will say, and Glenn, you're probably, and Chelly maybe, uh, but if you're gonna be going out and soliciting funds, if somebody were to give the city funds for this, that's not tax deductible, is it? Because otherwise they need to have the appropriate, what, five oh one, three C or whatever it is?
Where we run into a problem from a tax standpoint, Mike, is if, is if they earmark those funds, although they're going to the city, but if they earmark the funds for a specific purpose, the IRS would be within their rights to potentially disallow that as a charitable contribution. Um, now you're drawing a fine, fine line there as it relates to tax code, uh, but that would be my understanding, if, if a donor or earmarks those funds, it might be a problem.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, whichever way you go, I believe you guys are gonna have to create a nonprofit.
Uh, we are a nonprofit right now and I have talked to a couple of the bankers and they would be glad to set up a, uh, contribution, uh, account and, uh, just like they do for several things that go on within the, uh, community, uh, that people contribute to nonprofits for various purposes. We've, we've, uh, enjoyed a lot of support from all the veterans organizations, uh, we haven't heard anything, uh, negative from the public out here. Just about everybody I talked to thinks it's a very good, uh, venture and, uh, we just like the support of the city council and it is very crucial, I'll, I'll just plainly come out and say that, it is very crucial to have a perpetual maintainer of the cemetery. Like I say, uh, eventually all of us are gonna be gone, but they have to have some guarantee that it's gonna be taken care of. Now, I know cemeteries and talked to several people that have, uh, been buried in the smallest cemeteries and, uh, some of them are growing up in the weeds and everything and, uh, some of the veterans are very upset about that, that nobody around to take care of them.
Glenn, if I could ask you a question, if someone were to donate money to their organization and then they turned around and gave it to us, would, would that be allowable as far as, uh, that donation on their, on their tax forms?
Depending upon how their entity is structured, um, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go too far with that conversation with Josh.
Dennis, who, who pays for the, the headstone or markers, who pays for the interment? Who, where does that money come from?
It, uh, it's up to the family to pay for virtually everything except there is a plot allowance. The VA does pay for the headstone. So, uh, now if it become, it would become a state or a federal cemetery, uh, national cemetery, then it's, uh, everything's paid by the family until you get to the gate of the cemetery and then everything is paid by the VA.
Dennis, what are the possibilities of that going to a state or federal cemetery at some point?
Uh, we would like that down the road.
Sure.
If, uh, uh, if we can get the job done, uh, we're looking at it in the same type of formula that Black Hills National Cemetery took. They started their cemetery nineteen forty-eight and several veterans got, uh, buried there and then they went to the VA to ask for designation as a national cemetery and then in nineteen seventy-three, they give them, uh, the dedication to a national cemetery. And we're right in between two national cemeteries, Fort Snowing in Minneapolis, Black Hills National Cemetery there. It takes two days for most people to honor a veteran, a spouse or a family to travel that far from back. And, uh, the state has been saying for years, they'd like to see, uh, And the state has been saying for years, they'd like to see a veteran cemetery in the eastern part of the state, and I guess for being from Watertown and being a big supporter of Watertown, I think this would be a great thing for Watertown.
I, I'm going to catch heat for this, obviously, I'm, I'm a veteran. A few weeks ago, I, I was thrilled that looked like construction or the, the cost for erection or construction, this was going to be borne by somebody inside the city, but somebody made reference by going down a rabbit hole earlier tonight, and injustice to those citizens, this community, I, I can't support an unknown figure for an indefinite or permanent period of time without seeing, you know, better handle on what revenue might be generated on this, what the costs are going to be, especially if we're already talking about twenty eighteen, we got our budget hearings coming up next week now.
Right.
That, I, I really struggle with, with committing ourselves, if this letter doesn't do that, fine, but if, but if we're committing ourselves to some unknown figure for, you know, in perpetuity, I, I, I can't support that, even though I'm a veteran.
I guess I don't want to get into, you know, I know you do it all the time, you've done it on softball fields, you've done it on rec centers, you, you've committed yourself to quite a bit of, of ongoing expenses and operations and that, and I know some of them don't break even, some of them are costly, I think our cost effect of twenty thousand is pretty minimal.
I don't think we're prepared to act on a dollar amount tonight, I mean, I think we're prepared to act on the letter, and it is possible that we could address the dollar amounts in the budget hearings, which are upcoming, even then, I think it's a little rushed, based on what Shelley said about the equipment necessary and transporting it back and forth, that concerns me a little bit. But what, what I would like to do is just address the letter and then perhaps move that to the budget hearings to talk about the dollar amount.
Just a comment about the letter, as we've, as we've been talking about this, I'm trying to recreate the history of what happened over the last year or so. When that letter was first put together and signed, I believe the intent was to give you that city support so you could go to the, the VA, to the state and the feds, looking for different designations, is my, is my memory correct, and that's why we did that letter?
Basically, the way I, I took it was that you'd give us full support to go out and fundraise. The only catch that we don't have that would be the perpetual taking care of it, you know, we could say we raised a million dollars for perpetual care of it, but the, the VA will not stand by that because all funds sometimes run out and, and they would want a, want us, you know, a perpetual caretaker, just like the federal government takes care of the national cemetery. The tribes has two cemeteries out in western South Dakota, they have committed to take care of that. We're looking for one on eastern part of South Dakota, and that is a crucial part of, of the going forward with this.
Okay, I'm, I'm...
Anna, I guess, if you don't feel comfortable answering that question tonight, and we get the letter of recommendation, we can probably still go ahead with fundraising, and, and like the last time that we met, I said, if we don't fulfill our part of the fundraising, then you don't have to fulfill any part of your, our request for you, and we have had a lot of people that are positive about that, we can raise that money, we're looking at, to, I think, Don had all the estimates, and we really went through a thorough process of getting estimates, not just some sky and, you know, guessing estimates and that, we went to actual expert contractors that have given us figures to do all this, so we're, we're confident in the figures that we do have.
I would like to ask you to put something in writing for the obligation, the financial obligation that you're asking the city to provide.
Okay.
If you could give that to me, and I will present it into the budget, and we'll have hearings on that, and, so you can get a firm answer, because I'm not sensing that people are ready to give that tonight.
That's not what we're asking on this agenda, I know either.
Right.
That's right, this letters before...
That is not how it's averaged, so, I need a motion and a second, already have it, okay, so I will call the question, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, item number fourteen, authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement for professional services with Helms and Associates for the hangar taxiway expansion project at the Watertown Regional Airport. Todd, I see you're here.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, this is here tonight because this is the second time in the last ten years, I believe, that we've gotten a, a phone call or an email from the state saying that because bids have gone really, really well statewide, there was some additional funding available, they asked if, if there was any way that, hey, the airports that we work with would be able to take advantage of that. I did look at your five-year CIP that we've been working on here, and you did have a couple of years out, a need for this taxiway, I think Todd's had some requests recently for that, it would have been really tough to get it in the year we showed it, because it was shown in the same year as your apron project, which is discretionary funding, so they wouldn't have funded both in that year anyway. I wasn't sure how much money they had, but I took a chance, after visiting here, I asked her if it would be okay to see if they had enough money to cover a taxiway project here, so I did ask you off in your nodics if they had five hundred thousand plus to do a taxiway project in Watertown, and they told me they thought they would, that they'd get back to me, they did, and they said they would have enough money to do a taxiway project here. It would provide an area for some corporate or some private hangars to be built, right now, you only have two places left out there, and they're only seventy-five feet wide.
Correct, seventy-five by seventy-five.
So, if somebody came in, wanted to build anything wider than seventy-five feet, there's no place for them right now that, that would be served by a taxiway. It would be a good addition for you out there, I think it's really good timing for you. Remember that all FAA projects are five percent local match, we are estimating it at six hundred thousand dollars total project, which would be a thirty thousand dollar local match, so five hundred and seventy thousand would be grant money. Any questions on that?
Uh, the location of this is off of Taxiway Bravo, so this would be right next to, used to be Airco, now One Vision, they are looking to get a Part 145 certificate and put up a hangar for this, this would allow that to happen.
So, Bob, is this a, did our bids come in lower here, or overall, which freed up money?
Yours did too, but...
Okay, so our five percent...
Overall, yours...
What's the net difference between this thirty thousand that we would have to give, right, to commit to this, versus what we thought we were going to commit on the project that's going on now? Does that make sense?
I know what you're asking, I don't know the answer, I can get it for you, but...
Because I think that becomes an easier thing for us to look at and say, well, we planned on paying a hundred, and we really have to pay eighty, so this is thirty, so net difference is ten.
Yeah, and I'd like to be able, I think it was close, I think we were just slightly under, if I remember right, on the last one, but you've also had some issues out there with some electrical equipment and things that were not planned in that, that you're going to have to do, but they've said we could put as a change order under that project, Mike, so to answer your question, I don't think we're, I don't think we're going to be under on the current project, so...
I see this as an opportunity to take advantage of a windfall, but, you know, normally, we don't get this opportunity.
Again, if we were to agree to this, which we likely will, then becomes an issue where those funds are coming from, correct?
Todd, can you talk about that?
Uh, yeah, I'll defer to Shelley.
Well, I'm on a roll, so let's just keep this going, talking money. The, the five percent for the airport project runway that they're doing right now came out of the Second Penny, that's where most of the five percent AIP funds come, I believe it was four hundred and five thousand that was budgeted total, that's been transferred from the Second Penny to pay for that project, so we would just increase that transfer thirty thousand to cover the five percent costs that aren't going to come back in. And that would just be from the unallocated fund balance that we have sitting in there at this time.
Also, I can add, you know, our track history at the airport, the last few years, we did get another opportunity like this for a taxi lane that expanded our private hangars. I fully agree a hundred percent that this will bring back the revenue tenfold for what we spend, the thirty thousand, if a person comes in and puts a two hundred by two hundred foot building in, they're going to lease the ground from us, they pay fifteen cents a square foot for that ground, I don't think thirty thousand's too much to, I guess, ask for, for the amount of return investment that we can get from this ground.
Don't get me wrong, I was just wondering where those funds were going to come from out of our current budget cycle.
Sure.
Do we fund it upfront and then get reimbursed, or is it the other way? We, we fund it upfront? Any other questions?
You mean, we pay for that whole project? Is that how that works?
Yes, and then every month we ask for...
And then we get the ninety-five percent back at some point.
Right.
You're getting it all, you don't pay the, like, you didn't pay the eight million dollars upfront, as each pay estimate comes in for that month, you pay that check, when Shelley sends a copy of the canceled check, you get reimbursed.
Right, we're, we're about forty-five days behind on when the money gets spent, the reimbursement comes, so, yeah.
But there are times when, especially with the concrete out there right now on your runway, where one month pay application could be in excess of a million dollars.
It, it has been.
Yeah.
Just saying. Sorry.
That's got to stop.
Do, do, just, do we have a motion and second?
No, we don't.
Okay.
I'd like a motion and second.
Maybe I spaced that off, I'm so sorry.
Authorize me to sign the agreement?
So moved.
I'm sorry, that I'd like to make the motion with the funds to come from the account that Shelley had mentioned earlier.
Okay, motion by Mike, second by Bruce. Any more discussion?
Again, potential conflict of interest, I'm recusing myself from this item as well as item fifteen, thank you.
Todd, while you're there, I got a question for you, how's our boardings looking?
I'm sorry?
How's the boardings looking right now?
My new goal's twelve thousand.
Really?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Are we going to make our ten?
I'm hoping to make twelve.
Awesome.
Do we get a bonus if we hit twelve?
No. A pat on the back.
Todd, again, what, what, what is the cutoff for that ten thousand? What, what's the date?
So, it's a little confusing with the program, the program for the ten thousand in payments runs on a calendar year, January first through December thirty-first, they pay us on a federal fiscal year, so, for instance, if we hit ten thousand this year, we won't actually see the million dollars until two thousand nineteen, roughly June timeframe, due to the fact of that's when the grants and stuff go through.
But, but it's based upon our calendar twenty seventeen?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're a hair over six thousand right now.
Okay, I have a motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries.
Okay, I do have one or two other requests, if we can, because, because this is a short timeframe, they have to have grant applications by September first, which means we're going to be after this one hard, but we would like to, and if, if we can, if not, we'll have to wait, when's your next meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
See, we need to be advertising and bidding this before September first, I don't know if it's, is it possible to get authorization to advertise tonight as well?
I think we can do that, can't, we can do that, can't we?
Yeah, the, right, and because it's, it's kind of a courtesy thing, there's nothing in state statute that says that they have to get permission, it's just, it's always nice to make sure that you're good with the project, so they don't waste the efforts to, to go and then come with a bid tab, and you say, I don't like that, and, and reject the bid, so, yes, there's no requirement that you have to give any particular notice, so, if you're comfortable doing that, you can, if you're not, then that's, that's your prerogative.
So, if you're comfortable with that, what I would suggest, if we could, is to get a motion to authorize us to advertise the project, and also to authorize the mayor to sign FAA grant applications and FAA grant offers as applicable, because I can guarantee you, once we open bids and get the grant application in, when it comes, we'll have one day to turn it around, because their fiscal year end is October one, and when we get in September, it gets hairy for them, so...
Okay, is there a motion?
I'd make that, I'd make that motion if Bob will read the motion.
To authorize the advertisement of the taxi lane project, and also to authorize the mayor to sign the FAA grant application and FAA grant offer as applicable.
I will second that.
Motion by Albertson, second by Lalum, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries. Okay, item number fifteen, authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with Core Engineering and Consulting LLC to conduct soil testing for the hangar taxi lane expansion project at the Watertown Regional Airport. And let's go ahead and get a motion and second for that. Moved by Bueller, second by Vilhauer, okay, Todd.
Uh, so we would recommend, this is for the project that you just approved, the taxi lane project, and we did have bids submitted, Core Engineering and Consultant came in at four thousand eighty-two dollars, and we would recommend that you went with, with that for the, the soil testing for this project.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries.
Thank you, guys, this really was a, a good window of opportunity, it is a good thing.
Yeah, appreciate that. Item number sixteen, authorization for the mayor to sign a donor recognition agreement with First Premier Bank for naming rights at the new city softball complex, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor, this donor recognition agreement is sort of like a stripped-down version of the naming rights agreement that the city entered into with Prairie Lakes Hospital here last year. The agreement recognizes the fact that First Premier Bank has provided to the city two hundred thousand of the projected, or the promised five hundred thousand dollars that they will provide as consideration. Included in the consideration provided to the city is that First Premier Bank is manufacturing the signs as depicted in exhibit, exhibit B of this agreement. In return, the city has provided that this agreement has a perpetual duration, in other words, so long as the city operates a softball complex at that site, the softball complex shall be named Watertown Premier Softball Complex, shall utilize the logo provided in exhibit A to denote it for social media, websites, press releases, program guides, et cetera. The agreement also allows, however, for the city to go and seek out subordinate naming rights, subordinate sponsorships, in addition to what Prairie, uh, what, excuse me, First Premier has slated as its... me, First Premier has slated as its primary sponsorship, naming rights sponsorship signs. Again, I direct your attention to exhibit B, the signs depicted there and the descriptions of those signs, uh, the, uh, firm that has been contracted by First Premier did a great job of mocking up approximately what they would look like and where they would be located. The final page on exhibit B denotes specifically where at the site these various signs would be depicted. Now, again, going back to, I kinda skipped around there, I apologize, the other sponsorship rights, the subordinate sponsorship rights, uh, there are some restrictions placed by First Premier on them, uh, with regard to, uh, some sites of, and, and placement of advertisement on the electronic billboard, that, uh, you know, uh, financial institutions are not, are restricted, uh, in, in their ability to advertise for the city to obtain naming rights, uh, or sponsorships, uh, from those sorts of institutions. Ultimately, the burden for handling maintenance, uh, in terms of normal wear and tear, uh, well, I should back up, maintenance is the responsibility of the city, uh, power to the signage is a responsibility of the city, the First Premier folks will replace the signage if the signage becomes, uh, derelict, becomes, uh, you know, substantially compromised by normal wear and tear. Otherwise, the expectation is if the signage is, uh, impacted by casualty, by accidents, by damage caused by an outside force essentially, that the city would be responsible for paying for the, uh, replacement of those signs. The city is allowed to, uh, the one place where there's a great deal of restriction is on the scoreboard signage, however, there's been a provision included in here that allows for the city to contract with the sign maker for these signs that First Premier has contracted with, to put up additional sign advertisement space on the sides of the, uh, scoreboard signage as depicted on page four of exhibit B. Well, I, I should say, the sign is depicted on page four, the, uh, additional, uh, signage that the city could option to put up is not depicted on there, but it's essentially extending out, uh, for advertisement on the left side and right side of the sign. Beyond that, um, I think I hit all the high points, if there are any other questions the council has, I'm happy to answer them.
I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the donor recognition agreement.
So moved.
Moved by Lalum, second by Danforth, further discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment, 'cause it was asked of me here a little while ago, I think, I wanna clarify that this is the original five hundred thousand dollars, this is not an additional five hundred thousand dollars, 'cause I think that-
Yes.
Because of the timing of this, I think that's important to note publicly, so.
I do have a question as well, if, uh, I saw on that rendering there, it looked like the hockey arena or ice arena was out there, um, is there any restrictions on that?
None whatsoever, Councilman.
Okay.
I guess I would like to thank and commend Justin for the work that he did on this, I know there were some pretty, uh, involved negotiations going on behind the scenes, um, that we saw after the fact, but I really wanna thank you, Justin, for the work that you did on this. And secondly, I had occasion to drive out there today, and the signs that are up already are classy-looking, uh, signs out there, and hopefully the rest are gonna, gonna look the same, but nice-looking signs.
Good. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries. Item seventeen, authorization for the mayor to sign a grant agreement with Infrastructure Design Group for engineering services on the Twentieth Avenue Southeast Bridge Preservation Project. Shane?
Thank you, Mayor, um, this isn't a grant agreement per se, but it's related to our grant agreement. This would be an agreement between Infrastructure Design Group and the city for engineering services related to the preservation of structure fifteen dash one ninety-six dash one nine zero, all, all the, alternately known as the bridge on Twentieth Avenue Southeast over the Big Sioux River. The city has been, uh, offered a grant from the South Dakota DOT for this project, and we will see, um, action, or proposed action on that in the subsequent, um, agenda items on, on tonight's agenda, but, um, this agreement is with, uh, Infrastructure Design Group, there is a design element in the amount of twenty thousand six hundred dollars, and then a subsequent attachment to that for, um, construction observation in the amount of eleven thousand one hundred dollars, so, with that, I'll, uh, leave it for any questions.
Is this already a planned expense?
This is, uh, scheduled for two thousand eighteen, and I do have it in my budget request for two thousand eighteen.
Good question. Any other comments? Like a motion and a second? Moved by Danforth, second by Bueller, all those in favor signify, oh, sorry.
I got a question, um, okay, this goes out for bids in December, is that the plan?
Actually, okay, so, the timing of this is a little bit aggressive.
Well, maybe that, oh, maybe you're gonna go ahead and, because the, the next page then gives us a, a pretty precise-looking number that, is that just an estimate, so?
Okay, so, the grant, when we prepare these grant agreements, they do these all the time, so they pretty much know what their effort's gonna be on the design end of things, so, and this is an eighty-twenty split, so the South Dakota DOT is gonna pay eighty percent, and the city only pays twenty percent of these funds that, that I've mentioned, but we pay them upfront on a preservation grant project and then get reimbursed our eighty percent, so I have padded into the two thousand eighteen budget, both the engineering and the construction element for this project. We are fairly aggressive, because we wanna actually be bidding this work in August, September, because the county happens to be bidding similar work at the same time, so, but we're not gonna see any bills to pay till after the first of the year, that's the intention of the timing of this project, so it's, it's kind of imperative, and, and I guess, with that, I'll add a request tonight to advertise for bids for this project, similar to what the, um, he just did on the airport project, so, uh, I hope that gives enough information, otherwise, any other questions, I can certainly try to answer.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries, okay, and I'd like a motion and second for authorization to advertise for bids for the Twentieth Avenue South Bridge Preservation Project.
So moved.
Motion by Lalum, second by Thorson, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries. Item eighteen, resolution for the mayor to sign a bridge improvement grant with the state of South Dakota for the Twentieth Avenue Southeast Bridge Preservation Construction Project, resolution seventeen dash twenty-three, so, this is for the actual construction.
This allows the, you to sign the agreement with the South Dakota DOT, the previous agreement was just for the engineering services from the consultant, so this then officially enters us into a contract and obligation with, uh, the DOT for this project.
Okay. Do you have a motion and second? Moved by Bueller?
Second.
Second by Lalum, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries. Item nineteen, resolution for the mayor to sign a bridge improvement grant with the state of South Dakota for the Third Avenue Northwest Bridge Construction Project, resolution seventeen dash twenty-two, Shane?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, again, we were blessed with the, uh, a second award for bridge, uh, improvement, uh, grant funds, this is for the Third Avenue Northwest Bridge, um, over by Lyons Park, which is our highest need, uh, for a bridge improvement at this time within our system, this grant was, uh, awarded just for the preliminary engineering study, in other words, they look at the hydraulics and, and what type of structure and those kinda i- issues upfront, the soils, testing and all that, so, um, this one is a little bit different, the state will actually enter the agreement for the engineering services with the consulting firm directly, and I've already seen the exchange of paperwork for that, but what this resolution does then, again, officially enters an agreement between the city and the state related to that project, it's still an eighty-twenty split, we only have to pay, um, twenty percent of the engineering fees, which I have also included in our, um, two thousand eighteen budget request, and it's, our portion of that, uh, project is very minor, I mean, it's just, I don't even think it's five thousand dollars for our rate.
Twenty percent of the engineering?
Yeah, twenty-
And, and the state pays it, we reimburse the state, our-
They'll bill us for, for our portion of the work, they, they pay all the upfront bills on this one, and then we pay, get billed and pay them back, so, just the opposite of the previous project.
Do we have an estimate on roughly what that engineering cost is gonna be?
Yes. Well, I guess I didn't include it in your packet, but it is, um, around thirty-six thousand dollars in that ballpark.
So we pay twenty percent of that thirty-six?
Yeah, we're about thirty-six hundred-ish, or something like that of the, or-
Thirty-six hundred or thirty-six thousand?
I'd have to look at the numbers, but I, uh, okay, I, but, okay, sixty-five hundred I think I budgeted for, so twenty percent of the thirty-six thousand.
Like a motion and a second? Motion. Motion by Danforth, second by Thorson, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries. Item twenty, consideration of bids received for miscellaneous storm sewer and street improvements project, Shane?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, this is, uh, actually three projects that we rolled into one, um, one project title, uh, it includes, uh, work on Fifteenth Street Northeast, um, no, most notably the connection with Fourteenth Avenue, and going south about, about a block, I guess it's, uh, Twelfth Street on one side of the street, and I think Sixteenth Street on the other side, but that would take care of that bump that we all noticed when we drive straight south of the wellness center on the Fifteenth Street, that's a pretty prominent, issue there, and we're gonna take care of that by reconstructing that, uh, storm, uh, sewer culvert and repaving a portion of that road. This project also includes improvements at the intersection of Twentieth Street and Birch Avenue, which has a very similar, um, issue, and then we've had a, a settlement issue on Eleventh Avenue Northeast, um, just east of Eleventh Street, it's been an ongoing issue since before I came to the city, uh, where this, there were settlements alongside a storm sewer line, and the curb needs to be redone, and, and some, um, driveway approaches, that kinda thing, so we're gonna take care of those three issues with one project, and the, the bids came in favorably right on our estimated budget, so, um, with that, I, I would recommend approval of the bids, oh, and, uh, just officially, the bids were, low bidder was J and J Earthworks, who has been, um, a common contractor on our projects, and we look forward to working with them on this project.
Shane, was this also a budgeted item?
Yes, I had budget for, for both.
For seventeen or eighteen?
Seventeen, the, these are, uh, I actually have two, uh, budget items, I'm gonna split this into some street improvements and, um, stormwater improvements.
I'd like a motion to, um, award the contract for the miscellaneous storm and street improvements project number seventeen eighteen to J and J Earthworks, Inc., in the amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand one hundred forty-one dollars eighty-five cents. Moved by Vilhauer?
Second.
Second by Lalum, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries. Item twenty-one, consideration of bids received for Jackson Park Parking Lot and Trail Improvement Project, Shane?
Thank you, uh, this was a rebid, we bid this work earlier in the season and did not get favorable bids, the, uh, Jackson Park, um, parking lot for the bolt ramp was, uh, underfunded for the work on the first round of bidding, the parking rec department had about seventy-five thousand dollar budget, and we had a hundred and four thousand dollar, um, quote at that time, so we rejected the bids by not taking any action at that time, because we didn't know that we would have any funding available. Subsequently, we've had other two-twelve funded projects that have come in underestimate, so we have funds available now to apply to the Jackson Park Project, and with that, uh, J and J Excavating was the low bidder, and we would recommend that they be awarded, um, for both the Schedule One work, which is the, uh, parking lot, and Schedule Two, which is the adjacent bike trail, um, the parking lot is in the amount of eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars, and the, um, parking lot, or the bike trail, excuse me, is twenty thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
On the attached bid tab, it says twenty-five thousand one hundred seventy?
Hmm, did I do a typo? The, the total amount of award for both would be, um, well, I read the wrong number for the parking lot, excuse me.
Okay, so the total is a hundred fifty?
Total is a hundred and twenty-two thousand nine ninety.
A hundred fifty?
Wait a minute, oh, excuse me, reading the wrong number, yep, a hundred and fifteen thousand one forty, I was reading the engineer's estimate, I apologize, so.
Shane, does that put us back to the original plan of what, what's going in there, are we still going with that?
It's our original-
Can't remember what you called that, regrind, or whatever they were gonna put in there?
Okay, we, this, these prices do, uh, allow for the wrap, and, and we're taking advantage of about a four dollar and fifty cent, um, reduction in the asphalt price for that, but- Yep.
I'd like a motion to award the bid for the two thousand seventeen Parking Lot Improvements Project seventeen oh one to J and J Earthworks, Inc., in the amount of one hundred fifteen thousand one hundred forty dollars. Moved by Solum, and second by Danforth, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries.
Shane, on that same matter, how about the dock out there, is there any thought about, that dock is shelled?
I believe that, uh, Jay has been working with the, the new facility on that.
Okay.
Last meeting?
Is there any old business to come before the council? Any new business?
When will the budget books be available?
I think we're gonna have them today.
Oh.
On your way out.
After adjournment.
Do we have any liaison member reports? Okay, I, um, do you think we have an executive session this evening in order to discuss and consult with legal counsel on a potential contractual matter?
Sarah, if I can go back a little bit, um, and talk about, uh, I had someone email me about the placement of the Showmobile, uh, uptown, um, and they parked it there Friday at three o'clock, the event wasn't Saturday, until Saturday morning from one to five, and I think it sat there all weekend long.
Yes. I, I know that's a, um, park department staffing, um, and cost issue, the park department tries to set the Showmobile up and take it down- The park department tries to set the Showmobile up and take it down during regular hours, so they don't have to call someone out like an emergency. It's not scheduled, if they know far enough in advance, they could schedule it, but if they, they don't, they'll have to pay somebody extra to do that, and so that's why they do that, it costs the park department less to do that. And, and that was recommended as a future-
Yep.
-work session item, so we'll be talking about that with the park department, about how much it actually costs, and maybe we need to raise the fee for the Showmobile to cover that cost, to cut down on the inconvenience, so.
So maybe, so the person who rented it didn't give enough notice for the park to schedule it, is what you're saying? And then it, there's more costs?
I don't know the details of it, but I know that, that, that was the reason, it was to set it up during regular park staff hours and take it down during regular park staff hours. So that's why that happens that way.
Okay.
It's a general rule. Okay, so we're going to enter executive session? Oh, oh, I need a motion for that.
So moved, to go into a executive session?
Second. Motion by Lalum, second by Roby, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay, motion carries.